Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Able to be here this evening, but it's still my pleasure to speak for her. Ms. Sassman is a lifelong learner and advocate of education. Ms. Sassman has supported student learners for years even well before she started at LPS. Ms. Sassman works to ensure student success no matter what. She's creative, very supportive of the LPS community. Ms. Sassman has a can-do attitude and at LPS, we know we would not be the same without her. We're grateful to have Ms. Sassman at LPS. And now to an amazing teacher that is here, Ms. Lailey. Ms. Lailey is an amazing teacher. She currently is a teacher in a multi-age, multi-grade, self-contained classroom. Not everyone could do that job with the heart or professionalism that she does. Ms. Lailey has over five years of teaching experience. Ms. Lailey enjoys challenging herself and I have no doubt she will continue to be a progressive educator in the many more years to come. Ms. Lailey has taught in a team teaching position. She has serviced students in an out-of-classroom setting. Ms. Lailey is collaborative and has supported all of the initiatives of LPS specifically and most proudly, Abilities Week, the Student Green Club, and many other student-centered educational opportunities that she comes up with or creates with colleagues. At LPS, it is all about teamwork and Ms. Lailey is a huge part of that team. Ms. Lailey makes learning accessible for all students in a fun and appropriate manner. When you enter Ms. Lailey's classroom, you are greeted and made to feel a part of that classroom community. She is warm and knowledgeable. Ms. Lailey is a huge asset to LPS and the South Hundredan community. Thank you to Ms. Lailey for all that you do.
And then from our middle school, high school, Principal McKnight.
So it is with great pleasure that I have tonight to introduce Mrs. Dawn Stevens as South Hundredan's Middle School High School Teacher of the Year. She's an amazing educator and colleague and beyond deserving of this honor. Our fellow art teacher, Ms. Sosio, truly captured the essence and spirit of Mrs. Stevens when she wrote the following. The aspect that you feel that you will never forget from a first impression is the feeling you felt interacting with that person. When I met Dawn Stevens for the first time, I was immediately touched with the warmth, positivity, and passion, which are all true qualities that represent her daily teaching style. Four years ago, I was fresh out of college, newly hired as a South Hundredan employee, and was stirring with all sorts of emotion as I was about to dive into my first teaching career. From the beginning, Dawn has guided me through every step of my teaching journey, from assisting with supply orders to navigating the kiln, to being my partner in crime during professional development days. She has continuously cheered me on and supported me no matter how crazy or large-scale my ideas may have been. Throughout my four years, Dawn has made all the time in the world to help me with tasks, stay later to teach me a new technique, or just to talk. I am forever grateful for her patience and generous time spent supporting me as a new teacher. The first impression will forever be a fingerprint left on my heart and will always remind me not to be fearful to try new things as I am comforted with confidence. Mrs. Stevens' patience, generosity with her time, and excellent teaching leaves daily fingerprints on her students. She's encouraging, positive, and always student-centered. Mrs. Stevens makes learning and working at South Hundredan a better place for everyone. South Hundredan will forever be grateful for her passion, kindness, and dedication to the arts. I cannot think of a better educator to be named South Hundredan's Teacher of the Year. Mr. Stevens couldn't be with us tonight, but a heartfelt thank you is wished by all.
Okay. Thank you very much and thank you to all our great teachers. So next, we will have our report of the student representative of the board, Brian Rampell. Take it away.
Since our last meeting, Mrs. Davis continues to hold her Chill Skills Group for Successful LAEF Event. Many of our students volunteered during the LAEF auction to make it a successful event. Last week, our high school students interviewed for a camp counselor position at this year's Camp Fairview. There were many strong applicants. The SH Literary Magazine is taking submissions for its publication. We encourage all students to submit their work. Night at the Nest was held on Friday, March 17th and Saturday, March 18th. Steel Team won the event. It was a wonderful event that showed great school spirit and community support. We would like to thank the LAEF and the Night at the Nest advisors for the wonderful evening. The Journalism Club is working on a story about Mrs. Schaefer and Mrs. Stevens to celebrate and recognize their impact they made on the school. Mrs. Stevens has been here for 30 years and Mrs. Schaefer has been here for 18 years, teaching and supporting the students. Our concert band traveled to Temple University last Friday where they participated in the Temple Festival of the Winds. It was enjoyable and a successful day for all. Now for our monthly sports update. The Skyland Conference, all conference teams were announced. Boys' basketball, first team, Aaron Zlesik. Second team, Thomas Worms, and with an honorable mention, Tanner McCaffery. For girls' basketball, first team, Tyler Boyd. Second team, Katie Fleming and Sophie Hinman, and an honorable mention of Eve Dirknewman. For bowling, first team, Trevor Syrac and Toby Springer. This month is National Athletic Trainers Month. South Hundredan Athletics would like to recognize Mrs. Amy Soma for all her hard work and dedication to South Hundredan Athletics and its athletes. Spring sports have begun. High school baseball and softball had their first scrimmages on Friday, March 24th. High school golf had their first match Thursday, March 23rd. High school track will compete their first meet Wednesday, April 12th. And middle school softball and baseball will begin tryouts Monday, March 27th.
Thank you. Any questions, Brian?
How's the track team looking, Ryan?
Well, on numbers, but the throwers are really good.
All right. How far are you going to throw it this year?
I'm going to break some cool records.
Excellent. I like to hear it's on the record. So you'll update that on your progress. That goes in the minutes. Any other questions for Ryan? Okay, then Ryan, I think you're excused, but I'm sure you've got homework to do after practice.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Ryan. Have a good night.
See you.
So now we'll come to our PTO, PTA, LAEF update. Oh, I do see someone in the audience from LAEF, but we'll start with the PTO.
Representing both the LPS PTA and West Amwell PTO tonight, Michael Strauss. And it's kind of fitting because most of what we're doing this evening is kind of going to show the alignment of our two organizations into a more district-wide strategy. First, I do want to give a shout-out to Family Literacy Night, which is not sponsored by either organization, but we are very excited about it. It's this coming Wednesday. There's 2,000 free books being given out, a local author, and snacks and fun, six to eight at LPS. In the vein of books, West Amwell just finished our book fair and we earned about $3,000 in scholastic dollars for future library use. LPS will be having their second one of the year, which will be a local book fair with the Frenchtown Bookshop from 4/24 to 4/27. Field Day dates have been set for both schools, so May 25th for LPS and June 2nd for West Amwell. To support the West Amwell Field Day, the PTO is going to be sponsoring Omega 50/50 or Super Mega 50/50 if you ask Suzanne. She wants to make it even bigger this year. We do use that to support our inflatables and we get every single kid a Field Day tee so that we can keep our rainbow intact. We also are aligning our sixth grade fundraising for next year and have started that or will be starting that. We have two skating events happening during spring break. The first is going to be Tuesday, 4/11, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Plumington Ice Rink. And Thursday, 4/13, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Frenchtown Roller Rink. So then in June, we have a group outing to the Trenton Thunder for both schools on 6/2 at 7:00 p.m. It's a Friday night game. LPS will be having their Walk-a-thon sometime in mid-May. They haven't set a date yet, but they are planning that. And then West Amwell is planning our Teacher Appreciation Week events from May 8th through 12th, in-house, and we also have been working together with the PTA in LPS so that we can open some special events to every single teacher in the district. And in West Amwell, we presented the Mad Science event that we sponsored to get kids a little excited about science this past month, and it was a huge success. Finally, the West Amwell PTO did pass some bylaw revisions in preparation for a district-wide PTO. This initial step was very minor, but it just opens up our mission to include use by all students of the South Hundredan Regional School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
LAEF? Matt, are you here for them? Mr. Larkin?
Good evening, everybody. So I'm here for the LAEF. And so as everyone may know, our auction was just Saturday night. We had a really good turnout and we're pretty sure we raised more funds than last year, so we're very happy about that. And we are very grateful to all of our sponsors and donors that really helped make it a success. And it was great to see a lot of the district administration there and several members of the Board of Ed. And special thanks to Kevin Kowalowski for all his huge efforts in the kitchen.
Chef Kevin.
Chef Kevin. I had some of those roasted potatoes left over tonight. Thank you. Pierogies are gone.
Wow, that's the benefit of being an LAEF board member, huh? You can take the food home with you.
All right. So for LAEF, the next door of business really is we want to generate some grant requests to spend the money that we raised. And what I want to point out is that one of our most recent grants was really initiated by some of the district parents first, and then they talked to some of the school teachers once they kind of figured out what they wanted to do. And I point that out because I really want to encourage everyone, if you have an idea or you think of something, please talk to some of the LAEF members or talk to other parents, but don't be afraid about the grant process. We are very willing to work with anyone to make that grant process go really quickly and really easily so that we really want to take this money and get it out into the schools for things that the kids need. So I really encourage people to think about things and don't be afraid of the grants. We'll help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Suzo, I think you, well, I want to say one thing, the LAEF dinner was fantastic. I mean, I think everybody that went there had a great time. The food was amazing. And you have something you want to read?
I think you captured just about all of it. He was reading mine. Someone did, Wendy emailed me today, but I think you captured pretty much all of it. Just again reinforcing Chef Kowalowski, a great job, and Lauren Romberger and her team for putting everything together, the kitchen and behind-the-scenes work. You know, and just on behalf of the district, you know, it was an amazing event. I mean, just amazing. And I realize the amount of hours and days it goes into putting all the moving parts together. So we're just lucky really to have the LAEF to support our program. So huge thanks from the district.
And just to piggyback on that, we will be accepting three LAEF grants tonight. Matt, quick question for you. The one that you mentioned that was parent suggested, is that the Joe Romano grant? Yeah. Okay. He's an engineer, so I was just, I think it's awesome. So bringing a parent who is a professional, who is somebody who helped build that Scudders Falls Bridge down there and was involved in some of that stuff to bring it into our classrooms and our kids, I think that's an amazing, amazing thing. So again, we couldn't do, you know, the LAEF supplements and improves on everything that we're trying to do here, and it's an amazing organization. So thank you very much for all that you do. But with that correspondence, we have none for the month. So I will ask for a resolution to approve the minutes for the February 27th meeting. And before I ask that, I'm going to ask Andrew, do we really need to approve minutes for the January 2nd meeting? Or is that a holdover? What's that? Yes, but I didn't think, I thought we had approved it last month. Okay, very good. So then we need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular executive session of February 27th as well as of the reorganization meeting on January 2nd. So it sounded like Sean moved it and Ronnie has moved second up. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? With that, we will move to, we have a report this evening from Mrs. McKnight, who is going to talk about the new middle school and high school schedule.
So just real quick, I'll say before Ms. McKnight starts her presentation, you know, this is a two-year process that we worked on this, and as we continue to talk as a district about focusing on improving student achievement, this is an important component as far as setting up a master schedule that really meets our student needs from the educational side. So I just wanted to kind of preface it. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Sefeli. I just shared it with you, so you can pull it up for our phone. And I'm going to hit one of the lights because it's pretty bright.
So thank you. So tonight I'm here to talk about the South Hundredan Middle School High School schedule change for the 22, beginning the 22, 2023, 24 school year. So to take us where we are right now, currently, we operate under a, what is called a modified block schedule. So what you will see up on, what you will see, we operate under an A, B, C, and D day schedule. So students over a two-day period of time are scheduled for eight classes. They will have four classes on an A day and four classes on a B day. So when we originally had block scheduling, when we started this schedule, it was only an A and B day. But what we had noticed is around the 2:00 o'clock timeframe, our away games for our sports, our students get out because we are technically a late-ending school. Time for a high school, so our students had to leave earlier. And the same students, since we have a lot of students participating in sports, we're missing those same two classes there at the end of the day. Here I have English 9 and Concert Choir listed there. So what we did is we added in from our A and our B day, a C and a D day. And what that does, the only difference between an A and a C day is that the bottom two classes flip. So as you can see here, Geometry and English, go to English and Geometry. And the only difference between a B day and a D day is that here you, on Block 3, you have an art class and then Concert Choir, in which D day you go to Concert Choir and then Art. That way, you're rotating between those classes so that you're not missing the same two classes each period of time. So under our current schedule, each block meets for 83 minutes. So a kid, a student goes through their schedule in a two-day period of time. So 83 minutes, 83 minutes. Middle schoolers will go to unit lunch first, then they go to house. And high schoolers go to house first for 30 minutes and then to unit lunch. And then they'll have Blocks 3 and Blocks 4 of their time. So why change the schedule? So we have been examining this different scheduling models over the last two years through our PLC works with our staff as well as student input. So our current instructional blocks and minutes are 83 minutes long for our students. The new rotating drop schedule will be 56 minutes, meaning more face-to-face contact with the student's content teacher. And with a new schedule and the focus on improving student achievement, because this is what's driving this, it is important to build time during the school day where students can access all of their teachers for academic support and interventions. So further on in my presentation, what you will see is we have placed a flex period into the school day to address this. So what is a rotating drop schedule? So students are scheduled for the same eight classes, but they will meet six out of the eight classes each day. Two classes are dropped every day, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. So as you can see, you're still on an A, B, C, and D day schedule. And the top of the schedule, the morning, rotates the periods 1, 2, 3, and 4, and the bottom half of the schedule rotates 5, 6, 7, 8. So if you see 1, 2, it just keeps going. It snakes its way through. 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4. And then it repeats another A day. And then on the bottom, after an all-school lunch, in which, later on in the presentation, I will present what that all-school lunch is and what that looks like, as well as the flex period. And the bottom half of the schedule goes 5, 6, 7, 8, 5, 6, 7, 8, 5, 6, 7, 8. So the reason why I put this visual up here so that you're able to see is that, for example, this period 1, the class will meet and students will have access to their teachers for that 56-minute period of time over a three-day period of time. So they will be three days on, one day off, three days on, et cetera. And as you can see, period 4 does the same thing. And here on the bottom end of the schedule, period 5 rotates down, day off rotates down again. So the idea is students meet more often in a rotating drop schedule in comparison to every other day in their current modified schedule. So why the rotating schedule? It meets the developmental needs of our students. It helps us with our absences and our tardiness on particular days. The proposed schedule allows for more rotation in the schedule, so the same classes are not missed in the morning as well as for the sports participation at the end of the day. So like I said, in our current schedule, right, by going to a C and a D day, there were different classes. Now there's there were different classes. Now there's even more rotation in the classes as well. So the students, the student athletes are not missing the same, um, classes. There's a variety each day. For example, that student doesn't like math at 8:00 AM in the morning. Um, that way, that period one, if they're scheduled for math, one day a week, they will have it at 8:00 AM, but it will rotate and drop through the schedule. Um, it allows us to create that flex period, that all-important flex period where all students will be able to access teachers for academical, academic need and support and interventions. And also when evaluating all of these different schedules, um, what we realized with this rotating drop schedule is that there is no loss to our current instructional time. There's actually an addition of four minutes. So as you can see with our current block schedule, each class meets, uh, 10 times in a 20-day period, which is a full cycle times the 83 minutes is 830 minutes. So they're building instructional minutes per day at 83 minutes times the four classes that they currently have is 30, 332 minutes a day. In the proposed rotating drop schedule that we have now, each class meets 15 times in a 20-day period, meaning their full type, cycle times of 56 minutes equals 184 minutes. And the building instructional minutes per day is 56 minutes times six class instead of the four that they currently meet, equaling 336 minutes. So, right, there's an additional four minutes per school day. But, um, the reason why I went through this exercise is to show that there is no loss to instructional time. And there is actual gain instead of meeting with a teacher every other day. Um, students getting access to that content area teacher, uh, three days in a row with one day off. So this is just a little visual here. Um, the 2023 best school districts in New Jersey, according to Niche, um, as you can see, have all moved to a, using a drop rotation bell schedule. So like I said, it's a visual there to say that, you know, people have done their research as well as us through our P L C work to say, you know, they've all came to the same conclusion that we, we have, that this is good and great, um, to improve student achievement. So what does it look like, our rotating drop schedule for the 2023, 24 school year? So this is our actual schedule that we're moving to. Now, we stayed within the same confines as, um, our current hours in our school day. Currently, our breakfast opens at 7:30. Our warning bell is 7:53. Our period one, 7:55. The end of the school day being 2:46. Now, once again, as you can see, periods one, two, three, four, the top of the schedule rotates between periods one and four, and the bottom, um, rotates period five, six, seven, eight. Now, once again, you see that flex period of time in which I will get to as well as an all-school lunch. Also taken into account is our students that attend Polytech. So currently our students leave for Polytech at 7:50 AM. Um, they return from Polytech and our PM Polytech leaves at 11, uh, returning at 2. Um, there is, I just for, um, purposes, I did not put Polytech flex here on the bottom, but we want to make sure that all students have access to that. So those P, um, Polytech students that miss that flex period within that school day at, at the second half of the day will have their flex period. So, pyramid of interventions. So our flex period is based off of this pyramid of interventions, okay? And the flex period is a 30-minute period of time each day where students will be able to get the support that they need and that they want from the teachers that they need and that they want. So the pyramid of interventions is a process that uses both prevention and intervention techniques to raise, um, academic achievement of all students. It is a way for all students to get what they need every day from the teachers that they want. So tier one, as you can see, is a three-tier system. Tier one is our core instruction. That's our grade level curriculum, our core instruction. This supports our, all of our students. This is what all of our students are doing each day in all of their classes. Our tier two, which is our targeted interventions, which is our flex periods, students who miss those essential content standards in that tier one will have help, that more targeted help by their teachers. And they will be the driving force of what they need and how they need and from what teachers that they, they're looking to receive that information from. And the tier three, which is our intensive interventions, that is a program into our students' individual schedules. So the characteristics of this effective flex period, it's extra help provided to, for all courses, not just to test subjects. The time will be required, not individual, in imitational, I'm sorry. And that is the reason why we moved it, um, off of our lunch period because currently we do have house. Um, and house has turned into an extension of our lunch period. Um, right after two blocks, three hours in the morning of instructional time for students, if they have house first or lunch, right, they're, they're tired, right? And that they know they're going to lunch, uh, the second block. So we purposely moved our flex period into a time of day to make sure that it's instructional and that all students are receiving it. The priority of our flex period is the reteaching of the essential standards which are taught in that tier one intervention. Um, provides extension activities for students who have mastered those essential standards. And any given day, students could be going to a different location depending on that need. So what is in our flex period next year? So we have four categories, academic, extracurricular, counseling department, and what our, our, some of our staff will be doing during that time as well. So we will have math centers, social studies, science, language arts, writing centers, reading centers, homework, makeup tests, and opportunities for enrichment, acceleration, and extension activities. Our extracurriculars are still our band and chorus. On Tuesdays, our band meets. On Wednesdays, our chorus meets as well as our student council. Um, students will have the opportunity during that 30-minute period of time each day to access our counseling department, whether that's our college and career planning, our student access to their counselors instead of being taken out of class time, mentor programs, our NHS, um, peer tutoring, tutoring, as well as mindfulness activities. And the staff, once again, will be working, um, together in their professional learning communities as well as common planning time to make sure that our articulation and scope and sequencing of our lessons is, is what our students need. So the all-school lunch in that schedule is 30 minutes. Like I said, right now we do have house period of time and we do have 30 minutes of lunch, um, which has made for, uh, pretty much for all students, an hour period of time, um, that is non-academic. Um, we will be going to a 30-minute all-school lunch, which we will be utilizing this high school commons, our middle school commons, our high school gym, and our auditorium lobby. The students will have access to the media center and remote kiosk will be set up in various locations. Our lunch tables are to be set up into the high school gym and there'll be tables into the auditorium lobby. So in the high school gym, that actually will be our middle school lunch and the auditorium lobby is where our seniors will be. Uh, the separation of the flex period, as I stated before, from the lunch period maximizes the integrity of that flex period. So students will seek the academic and social emotional supports they need. Um, the hour senior privilege that we currently have will no longer be an option due to the reduced amount of time, um, for lunch. But with that being said, um, I will go into, um, that in, in one second. But I looked at a little bit of the data of our current, uh, senior class. Our current senior class, there are currently 71 students. Of the 71 students, uh, 60 of the students are signed up for, um, senior privilege. Um, on any given day, anywhere between 16 and 25 students take advantage of senior privilege. So what can we do for the seniors? So once again, keep in mind that not all of our seniors go out to lunch, whether that's due to transportation or financial restraints. Their lunch will be in that auditorium lobby. So, um, we will allow them to DoorDash if they want to buy lunch from an area restaurant, which will be delivered to that area. But also we've worked with Antonio's who will be creating lunch specials for our South Hundred and seniors. So as I said in the previous slide, the hour lunch, uh, senior privilege will go away. They still have that half-hour period of time and I've done it in my car a couple of times to make sure, um, from here to, um, Antonio's is anywhere from a three to a five-minute drive. Um, so they have it, um, equal enough time. And Antonio's is willing to work with us where they said they can make anything from chicken fingers and fries, um, to pizzas and so on and so forth. So I said in the next coming weeks that I'll be going back down to solidify that menu and what that looks like for our high school seniors. Um, and as well, they can always buy lunch from our food service provider here as well as bring their own lunch. Our rollout to parents, a video will be sent in English and Spanish for our parents to view. Um, we have met with all the students to review the schedule and how it works and will, and we will continue with, to meet with them as well as, of course, uh, myself and Mr. Miller always have an open door policy for any of the students that have any questions or in concern. And we will also have an in-person Zoom meeting in the month of April to answer any questions parents may have about the schedule. Question?
I'll, I'll open it up to questions from the board. If anyone have any questions for, uh,
That's fine to that.
Well, the, uh, the new schedule.
McKnight, can you go back to that pyramid? Yeah, thank, the pyramid that you had up there. Yeah. If you could just maybe help clarify one thing. Um, you mentioned miss essential content. Can you just, when would that example be that they're missing? What is missing? Either they're not attending or they're, what is?
It could be all of the, in, in all honesty, it could be that student that's absent from school that day. And there was a key concept that was taught and, you know, they arrived back in school the next day and like, what happened? And where are we and what are we doing? They would be able to access that teacher in that flex period of time in order for reteaching or clarification, et cetera. Um, it also can be the student that is sitting there in class and, um, you know, the rhythm of the class period of that day is too quick or not, the student is not understanding and needs clarification, can go into that flex period and say, hey, what am I missing here? What did I, what I'm, what am I not getting? To get that extra support.
Can I, I'll just jump on that too. So it's really important, we've been working on and you keep seeing like interventions, interventions. This is something you're going to see when we get our special ed audit that will be coming next month. Is really a focus on a systematic form of interventions for our kids. We've been working with our teachers specifically on what data drives this flex period. So for example, if a teacher gives, let's say, an exit ticket or some type of formative assessment at the end of a teaching block and from that gathers data that some kids got it and there's a couple of kids that didn't, that's going to drive that flex period, right? Because some of that information is really essential. It's going to rear its head down the road. So we want to make sure our kids get a good handle on it. It's not something we can kind of just gloss over or skip if they didn't get it. So it's really, really important that we use that data to drive, okay? If they miss these essential standards that I taught over these day or two, they need to come to flex. We need to spend some time on catching them up to make sure they have and demonstrate mastery. That's really important.
And to follow up on that a little bit, the data actually shows that schools that use a flex period and overall increase in student achievement occurs. It, it, it does work. And with that being said, we've been working with some companies, um, that actually have programs and systems that schedule flex period where, um, as teachers have an ability um, and can request a student, like Mr. Suso is saying, they, they noticed that from the data that they received from that exit ticket that day, that the students are not comprehending, didn't get it, there's, there's a misfire there somewhere, right? They're able to request that student into that flex period and the student would receive an email saying, this is the room that you would be going to tomorrow for that reason. Students have ability with this system as well, um, in order to request a teacher. Um, and once again, a teacher will get their rosters during that flex period of time, say Johnny's here after they've requested it. So, um, it's, once again, we have taken it away from that all-school lunch to make sure that it is data-driven and academic-driven for all students, right? Because there has been questioning is like, why not at the end of the day when the, the, you know, the sports kids are leaving? Because we want the sports kids to have it. Um, we believe in it. We've seen the data. We work through it through our PLCs. And, and it's an instructionally sound method to reach all students, um, for intervention, prevention, and academic achievement.
Also keep in mind, a lot of times when you hear the word intervention, you automatically associate it's students in a struggle. Let's think about the other side of things. For some of our high achievers, right? Now this is an opportunity, 30 minutes a day, for them to perhaps explore some things that can accelerate or enrich. And even things like we talked about online E P courses, online opportunities, different things connect with different alters. There's all kinds of realm of possibility for some of our higher school kids to really, something that they maybe couldn't fit in or in their normal schedule for the pack of classes. Here's an opportunity where we can extend them beyond and really push them to the next level.
Other questions from the board?
One quick question. Um, either one of you can answer this. Last year we met about, uh, machios and the food service having some capacity problems. Kids weren't getting enough time to eat. Uh, I don't know what the current timeframe looks like, but I was curious about, you have multiple sites within the building and 30 minutes for everyone to get this done.
So we, we, we definitely looked at that as well. Um, and we've actually been timing our students through the lunch line. So there was a difference, um, with machios from this year to, from last year to this year, for that matter. Um, on average, our entire middle school and/or our entire high school get through the entire lunch line within an eight to 10-minute period of time. Um, there has been a difference with the two cashiers, um, that, that machio has placed.
Last year, it's really, I got to give you credit, because we went to them last year with a concern. Risen beyond what we expected as far as setup, personnel, staffing, and I think that's.
Yeah. And then their salad day the other day was exceptional. They really are doing really neat things.
Are there other questions from the board? No, I would just say one, uh, on one of your slides, uh, Ms. McKnight, you mentioned you had, uh, you said the, the flex period is required, not invitational. I just want to go back to that because again, maybe four or five years ago is when we started the house period. And the flex period kind of sounds to me like what we thought house might be. But there was a couple of advantages you mentioned. So I think it, but the, but the required not invitational piece is that maybe the big one. Because, and maybe you could speak to that a little bit.
So that, that's where the system comes into play right now, um, right? All students are assigned to house period of time and it is by, um, last name. It's alphabetical. So you're placing a lot of the students, right? And all they really want to do is hang out and be with their friends, right? And if your friend doesn't end up in the alphabetical order that, that you're looking for, there, there's a lot of, can I go to science class? Can I go to art class? Because I have such and such to do when they're actually really just going to, to look for their friends. So right now, um, house, um, one, the way that it's structured through that last name and then through alphabetical order, it's placing students in a holding place, right? Um, some students are, are going to the library. Some people are using it. But overall, the, the accountability and the purpose isn't there. This flex period, um, as Ms. Mr. Susa was saying, is data-driven, is getting students what they need. And all eyes will be on these students, um, to, to have a program where, whether it's that exit ticket and, and this teacher noticing, whether it's the main office saying that this, uh, student was absent yesterday. Um, so they need to be scheduled to, for this flex period of time because they missed that class yesterday. So with this new system and with a targeted, um, purpose, uh, flex period, I believe will be much different than house.
Just basically the teachers can kind of compel the kids who need the help to get, as my son, for example, you could tell him, oh, we're going to give you an opportunity to get the help, but he will be like, you know, I think I'll go meet with the club instead.
Yes.
If it's an optional thing, right? This is a more compelled kind of a thing, which I think is good.
Yeah. And on top of it, we are also, right, uh, the way that the teachers are scheduled in house currently, right? And it speaks to, um, what is our flex, uh, flex period? Uh, the way that our teachers are scheduled into the house periods is that they just get a group, they get a roster. They might not have any of these students in class. So I've been meeting individually with all of our teachers that go over the schedule for next year with them as well as getting their input of what they would like to teach during their flex period of time, right? So of, of course I have some of my phys ed teachers that would like to have yoga. You know, that student that needs that mindfulness and needs that quiet period of time, and it doesn't have to be every day. You know, they could be in the math house or the calculus or the art, um, another day of the week. Um, but they've been coming up with some really neat ideas of, of what they would like to be doing as well.
How do you manage capacity in that situation? I mean, if you offer something like yoga and, you know, the entire school wants to go to yoga during the flex period, how do you manage that?
So some of the systems that we've been looking at, um, it's a tiered system, right? With, I, I kind of laugh a little bit because the ultimate control is me. I have the overall say of, yes, you can. I have the overall say of yes, you can, no, you can't. However, it, there's an eight request process in it. You might not get your, you can request, for example, you want to go to math. It's probably usually the opposite. You want to go to yoga, right? And you request yoga, but that teacher requests you for math that day because they see that you have that need. That teacher's request overrides the student's request.
So in other words, if a teacher wants you, because you, they feel that you have a need for some, to fill a gap, then the students are going there as opposed to getting to make their own choice about where they're going.
Correct.
Which is like, that's where the problem with the house.
Yes. There's that, that accountability that the flex and the system with the flex puts in place.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, another aspect is also the counseling services. So that's an academic benefit because kids who access the, the counseling services can do that during the flex period as opposed to leaving class.
Absolutely. And, and another thing that our counseling department mentioned right now, right? They meet one-on-one with all of our, our seniors every single year through the college and, and career planning. They're being pulled from academic time because our seniors, right? And rightfully so, you know, hey, by the way, I'll meet you at lunch. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going out today. You know, that type of thing. So then they're being pulled from academic with this flex period of time. They can use that time without being pulled from, from their academic subjects.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Well, then I would say, thanks, Mrs. McKnight, for the, for the presentation. Folks, we're going to have, well, we're going to have a public, we're going to have a public comment period in which time you can ask questions. And if there's something that can be answered quickly, Ms. McKnight is here, if she's willing. I hope that she would answer those questions. But for now, we'll have our superintendent report first.
All right. So a lot of exciting information to share this evening. What I wanted to share first, if you've noticed on our agenda, there is under building and grounds, a recommendation for board approval for our preliminary budget for the 23-24 school year. What I will tell you is this budget reflects a 2% increase for our general fund tax levy. If you're not aware of the timeline, the county requires a preliminary budget that's submitted. Andrew has to submit that probably tomorrow after this meeting, but changes can still be made. Our public hearing on the budget is not until April 24th, so there can be plenty of changes that can be made if they need to be made. And I will share more details with the board as well at our public budget hearing in April about the specifics of the budget and obviously a lot of public comments, which is public. But I just kind of wanted to share that because it is on our agenda. So we had an exciting week last week with our school construction project. So if you were following along, we had bid openings for the 588 building and the pre-K4 building. So I wanted to share the results of those bid openings and then talk about next steps. Before I do that, I just wanted to share, if you remember back in the fall, we talked about how we were going to invest our $33 million or $31 million about, and we used some, took some out for some of the fees we had to use. You can see that since we've invested, we've made $462,000. Pretty good. So, and this will continue throughout the life of the referendum as we draw out money for different things. The pot of money stays in this account and, you know, if all goes well, we would love to even be closer to $78,000, $900,000 at the end of it. So this is really important. Keep in mind, this money goes back to the taxpayer, offset the debt service. So that's really exciting for us to try to help with the overall referendum. So this is something I wanted to get an update on, and I'll give periodic updates that we get through the referendum. All right. So we had eight contractors bid on the referendum for the 588 building, the project, and this is how it lined up. So we had a bid opening meeting in the auditorium. All of our contractors came in with sealed bids. Andrew opened them up with our architect, read out the bids out loud. And the winning bid for the 588 building was Ernest Bach and Sons and DocCo, which was a joint venture, at $19,296,000. So that was our first bid opening, and that was on Wednesday. And then on Thursday, we did the bid opening for the pre-K4 building. So keep in mind, the way this was set up, we had a base bid, and then we had an alternate bid. The alternate bid, if you see over here, was to add a freezer and a storage area for our kitchen. So if you're familiar with the LPS kitchen, it's tight, right? It's very tight. Everything has to be squeezed in that area. So when we designed the building, we designed it so we would have a little addition that comes off that kitchen area where all the freezer items and storage can be in there, and it's going to open up more space in the kitchen. So what we asked our contractors was do a base bid and then do an alternate bid on that kitchen piece with the freezer. So you can see how that lined up. And H&amp;S Construction came in with a total bid, $7,845,000. That included the alternate bid as well. So what, what that means is the board has to make a decision on, do we want to just take the base bid and not do the alternate bid with the, with the addition of the freezer? Or do we want to do it all? And I think we want to do it all because we really need to do it all. But we put it as an alternate just because of pricing and just wanted to see kind of where things landed. So that's the process as far as the pre-K4 building. So where we are, if you look at our budget, the voters approved $33,412,000. We take into account the 588 bid that I just shared, the $19,296,000. We take into account pre-K4 renovation, $7,845,000. We take into account other things that we're going to have to pay for, our architect, our engineering services. Believe it or not, there's pretty hefty fees for the Department of Education and the Department of Consumer Affairs to actually review all of your plans. You have to pay for that. So we've already submitted that as part of the approval process. All of our permits along the way, attorney fees for our bonding, any third-party testing when we talk about things like soil and digging, soil has to be tested to make sure it's a certain type of soil, it doesn't need to be remediated, environmental testing that goes on throughout the process of construction. And when we do all that, we're left over with $3,412,832. So the items that are still outstanding for our buildings that were not part of the bid, and I'll explain why, furniture, technology, safety and security, flooring, casework, kitchen equipment, and then construction contingency. What I mean by construction contingency is, we've allotted a certain amount of money when we dig out for the 588 building, there's rock, right? We learned that when we did our soccer field. There's a vein of rock that kind of goes through there. We tested all that. We drilled boring holes to determine how deep the rock is. So we put all that into bid specs and the contractor knows what they're getting into. If for some reason they get into something that's unexpected, we need to have a contingency in our budget, right? And they can come back to us and say, hey, you said that it was going to be this deep as far as the rock. It's actually a little bit deeper, so we need to do a change order for more money. And then we kind of work through that. So we need to have a contingency budget. The other reason why we didn't include these items is we want to have control. If you include, conclude these items in a bid, sometimes what the contract will do is substitute things out and reduce the value, but they're not necessarily the products we want. And for example, with technology, we want to have universal technology case well, right? We don't want to have something that's being differentiated for infrastructure and safety and security. We did a lot of operating in this building that are going to have the same vendor, we want to have the same software. We don't want to have someone come back and say, we want to substitute it at the same price and the same quality, if they would have the right to. So that's the reason why we pulled all that out of the actual bid specs. So next step, on the agenda this evening, the board will vote on two resolutions to award the bid that followed. For the 588 building, joint venture, Ernest Bach and Sons and DocCo. For the pre-K4 building, H&amp;S Construction. I will tell you that M&amp;M Construction finished second, where the bid opening for the 588 building did follow the call of a bid protest. So they were second. They were also $604,000 more expensive than our winning bid. They basically are claiming that because our bidder submitted a bid as a joint venture, meaning two contractors being together, Ernest Bach and Sons and DocCo, they're two different entities, they can follow. Or I mean, the construction attorney feels different. See why? There's nothing in the regulations or statute that prohibits joint venture permitting on school construction projects. The board should award the bid to allow the bidder taking into account his taxpayer money. The winning bid is $604,000 less than the second place bid. So we've done our research, our construction attorney has done their research. This has been done in public entities other than schools, the way it's always worked, firehouse, doing things along those lines. There's nothing that prevents them from doing or being done at schools. So M&amp;M has an option if they want to try to follow up with challenges that they have to pay for and fight it out with Ernest Bach and Sons and DocCo. We'll see what happens for more, and we're in a good position. So the next step for the 588, we had a big meeting with Ernest Bach on Friday, this past Friday morning. It went well, kick-off meeting, introduction meeting, go over the plans one more time, all the different features, get an idea of who their, you know, construction manager is going to be on the site. As soon as the resolution hopefully is approved this evening, they will start submitting permit applications and beginning site work. So the fence is secured at site, construction trailer, begin clearing the site in the coming weeks. Our first date for substantial work to be completed is July 1. We have in the specs, what our expectation is, it will be completed by July 1. We will continue to hold and accountable for that throughout the process and then target dates throughout the next few. We're still due for a completion date of June of 2024, but I will say that we've been working on a contingency plan. I've got this question for members of the community in very immediate time. What happens if it's not done? Well, we're going to do everything possible we can to have it done. But for some reason, if it's not, if there's delays or whatever reason, we are working on a contingency plan for November 2024. We'll share more details about that, but really at this point, we have to see how progress goes with construction before we even think about guaranteeing what we're going to do. So for the pre-K4 building, we also had a vote of big meetings that will be on Tuesday, March 21st, for the H&amp;S Construction, High and Proud of the Community. We will continue to do this. Mayor Noah and I will host sometime in the month of April, a pre-construction meeting, and it will probably be in person and Zoom. Many community members may have questions about the project or anything they want to know, we'll be there to answer. We will begin construction on the pre-K4 building on the Monday of June 12th, with a completion date of June 2024. One of the first things you'll see around 12th is that fence. So you can see by the red, it will be a six-foot-high ceilinged fence that will pretty much surround the front of the building. That will be closed and locked off at all times as construction begins, especially with the, you know, new addition in the front of the building. So that area will be secured at all times. I just kind of wanted to put that out there for everyone to know what's in the spec. For those of you, I talked about this gentleman's name before, but I'll mention again, Josh Balcom, who is our construction manager from USA Architects, will be on site. Josh has been very involved over the last month or so, already working with the town tip, now working with our contractors. He lives great in Stanwell, he breaks down roads, breaks local, known in the community. He will be on site 24/7 for both of these projects. Managing, running our job needs and all the things to make sure that we get buildings built exactly the way they should be. So question to make, look, how can I stay up to date on what's going on? So a couple of different ways. First of all, if you haven't looked at the website, screenshot of it, right over the Quick Links page or School Construction Project, click on that. There's a whole list of everything we do, meetings, presentations, you can kind of see all the history. I'll be doing updates, obviously, at support meetings, my monthly updates showing pictures. But every presentation I'll do related to construction, I'll fly over to that site. So that's something that's available. There is email link, I think right now I have about 40 pages on there. Here's a link right in here if you want to sign up because you can live here either site and want to get updates before we start, things that are happening. I will do that, continue even throughout summer, the dog is still not set, but we'll provide updates and I get information. And then, you know, labor will matter, it's been great, like they will, people will be great as far as sending things out to the greater community. You may not have kids in the district that have access to the information. And again, I try to, you know, put stuff out as best I can on Facebook or on Twitter pages, but there's a variety of different ways. So if you know who wants, maybe you don't have children in the district that want to stay up to date, you can pass along this information. Probably a good idea if you don't want email link, and then I can send out updates periodically throughout our process. Any questions from the board before I move on? Our big school construction, where we are.
Tony, the updates email is just for school, for construction updates. In other words, you know, like the listserv, which once you sign up, you get everything. It's just construction.
For me, say, hey, next week, you know, it's raining.
Okay.
There's no link for that or you don't. All right. And then we're thinking by, I want to put a plug in, right? Link at night, it's a big night at LPS. MHRA, our education association, put a lot of time and effort, been working on this for months. So if you have the opportunity, stop out, like what you said, 2024, get the altar, get the readers, it's going to be a great night. So stop out between 6:00 and 8:00, that would be great for this thing. And then the last thing I want to mention, it's, it's not too late. In this room tomorrow night, we'll be doing our strategic planning first session. So if you're interested, the link is still here, we're focusing now. We're expecting tomorrow night, anywhere between 60 to 80 people who have registered to attend. So I'm excited about that. Keep in mind, it will be brought by New Jersey School Board. So Glenn Ward will be here, I'm going to do a little kickoff, kind of a state of our school presentation, about 15 minutes, and then I'm going to turn it over to Glenn, and then Glenn will take it from there. I will post updates. There is a link also on our website up there, that Quick Links for strategic planning. So after each meeting, we'll have minutes, things we want to note on. Link, I know we're going to have a slide next tomorrow night. We'll post those things, we'll post my updated strategic planning process. And keep in mind, if you can't make it tomorrow night, there's still a few more days, right? April 18th, 7:00 p.m., the LPS Commanium. And then Wednesday, May 10th, 7:00 p.m., the West Vanwell Commanium. So if you're unable to come tomorrow night, or if you haven't signed up and you just want to show up, show up. We'll have extra seating, the more useful we can have, you know, to really develop a new five-year plan. Community input is extremely important. Any questions, got anything else to add?
Reiterate, you don't have to register. Questions coming up, you don't have to register.
That is correct.
Okay, very good. So now we will move to the period of public comment. I will invite anyone in the public who would like to speak about anything on or off the agenda to, to come up. We will limit you, for the sake of keeping things moving, to about three minutes for your comment. If you want to ask questions about Mrs. McKnight's presentation, I'd ask that you direct all the questions and comments to the board. And if we, if it is something that we can answer tonight quickly, we will try to do so. If not, we will get back to you with a more comprehensive answer. So with that, public comment is open. I think I see Mr. McClellan would like to say something. Stephen?
You won't hear me. Start timing. So when the students heard about this schedule change, a lot of them were not happy, definitely when they found out the senior privilege option was going to be taken away. I managed to get three and a half full pages of 34 signatures by the students, mostly from juniors all the way down to freshmen. Most on the list is juniors. Some, most of the, on the classmen, they also know about this and they don't like the idea of having their time to leave the school when they get to being a senior. They don't like that, the privilege of that to be taken away. They, now, the whole idea of this new schedule and another, I think, excuse me. Another thing they also don't like is that they feel like they're going to have homework every single night and, because right now with the schedule is, you have homework, on any day you have math, well, you won't have math until another day, every other day, and that homework won't be due for another two days. And they don't feel like, they don't want homework back to back to back. And again, with the senior privilege and Mrs. McKnight did explain in a, an assembly during house on last week during Wednesday about that. And students still do not like, of, like having Antonios or DoorDash had an option. They much rather just leave the building and go like down a quick check or to go home. They much rather just leave the building and go like down a quick check or to go home even for lunch. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to make it to the meeting tomorrow, but one of my ideas is having house to be like the flex period of whoever, if you're struggling in like example in history, you're required to go to history that one day or math or English the following days. And for seniors, get to go out for lunch, leave the building, come back. I know there's only a handful of students, but we want to have that, uh, option. So if you want, you can.
Do you want to bring your petition up?
Too much about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Steven.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question, Ms. Bachelor?
I can point this way, but I know my question back. Jen Bachelor, West Hamwell, so for the, um, the, the scheduling, the, I'm, I'm sure a lot of people are going to laugh because when I bring up the topic that I want to bring up, but I noticed that music and chorus is, or a band and chorus is on the flex period and, and today that's not, I mean, like it, it's, it's being shown under as an extracurricular. Is it considered extracurricular today or is it instruction? Because it seems like it's less time.
So what happens with, uh, with our students, uh, that not all students are able to have just within strength of small school and, and our students in middle school and high school, not all students are able to be in band and chorus at the same exact time. They all have it in their schedule. So during that period of time, it's a full concert band and all chorus that, that one day.
Okay. And so that won't be, that, because I was looking at some of the other opportunities that'll be there and I was wondering, well, if you have a kid who's in the band, would they still also be able to take advantage, you know, like, so that won't take up their, their flex period?
Right. On Tuesday, they would have band and they have the four other days to go to, to access the.
And flex period would be in classrooms today or will it be throughout the, okay. And then, um, how will kids, how will students know when there are those like enrichment opportunities and stuff? Will that be, I guess, like, and could parents also maybe get something like in the beginning of the year?
Absolutely. So this, this is the process, right? With them. So as Steven mentioned, I meant since we did present the schedule and let them know about, but, uh, then once I become proficient in the system to be able to give it to them and then show them the options and then go back at the beginning.
Right. And like, so I, I guess the only point that I, I want to make additionally there is just knowing, like having the parents know so that, you know, if you have a kid who could be doing a little bit more and is choosing not to at least, you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't want it to be kind of hidden, like, no, this is what's here.
In our program, we're studying to our annual four goal.
Okay. And so the, and these invitations would be coming through, will this all be done in that new thing that's going to replace Aspen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we'll receive an email, uh, before they, it actually changes over at midnight at 5:00 AM, it's always the one that we think we might be.
Okay.
But, and the students will receive an email each morning of where their flex will be done.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Larkin?
Hello, my name is Matt Larkin, I live in Lambertville and I have two boys in eighth and 10th. So I am excited about the new schedule, just because I, I do think maybe the shorter time periods are going to be a little bit better for some kids. I like the idea of seeing it more often. And, and the one question I had is Principal McKnight, I know you said that, you know, you looked at these other top performing schools in New Jersey and you said, you know, they have information that shows it does work better. So do you have some expectations and things you're going to look at to say this is working or not working?
Absolutely. We will definitely evaluate as, as, as all of the teachers at the end of the year because after this first year, uh, of course, we need to be separating middle school and, and high school. So yes, there will definitely be a reevaluation period, uh, maybe what's working, what's not working, making, um, for example, with our flex period and going to the new step of the, for example, we had visited, uh, Mr. Miller and I, uh, various schools to talk with their administration team to see what they thought and, uh, and how it worked for them. And to be honest with you, we actually, when we went in, I said, well, most of them go horizontal with the one, two, three, four. So instead of dropping down, it literally, it was dropping, it was upward by going horizontally. And I said, well, why don't you do vertically to stay in the room? And they said at the time when they had moved to that schedule, uh, they should have thought that in 2020 hindsight, they rolled it out, hoping and they've been to that option. So we have been speaking with the other schools and, and going out and visiting and talking with, uh, administration that works for the.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
The other thing to keep in mind too, is this idea of flex is not just going to be a nine 12 thing. So as we design our schedules for pre K four and five eight, and we work with our principals on that, this is something that we're looking at, at all levels. Because quite honestly, right now, one of the challenges that we have, just the way our schedules are set up at the elementary level is there's times where kids are pulled out for an intervention out of the content area where.
We need to talk about length stuff when we're discussing, so getting into the meeting and through our session. And we all, we see everyone who are feeling very important states to maintain has increased because we are going to be having debt service, favorites to the reference and we are very important to stay at that percent. So even though through the next approval process, we can change the 2% standard. And many of you know that we do have the opportunity to increase about 2% for various things, which can be followed by a portion of 2%. We are also permitting a pre school gap in budget without school procedural, that's already included in our preliminary budget, expansion, that is something that we need to implement. So then our vehicles, again, talk link about various options considering stop, protest evening, uh, they have various options, but unanimously, the, we did agree that we should be accepting, uh, which amounts to construction, South County Regional Elementary School and Joint Venture Ernest Bach and Tom Daco, will be South County Regional Elementary School. So we finally have the B of the South County School, so in our session, we can actually transfer that to the program, uh, and try to plan some things in the future. And they are, for the, as we talked about, um, three of our friends, uh, we did a state of the day trip, uh, the superhero math, the piano and some of that.
So moved, can I have a second? A through L. Okay, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Keys, thank you. Any discuss, any discussion on items A through N? Seeing no questions or discussion, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 So just a couple of things I'll acknowledge on the agenda. We have another retirement, we're sad, LPS losing Mrs. Patori, but, um, she will be retiring at the end of the year. We just found out about that one last week. And then the two others I'll just mention, Jessica Fabiano has been with us as a custodial, has relocated, so she'll be leaving us as well. And then Kristen Shammer, who has been a great support system and teacher in our health and physical education department, has had two kids, has been home with a child all this year and has decided to remain at home. So she will be resigning, so that's a loss to our department as well. And then the.
The next part of our meeting, the major part, really talk about this hiring and what the district does for hiring in the process of applying candidates. So a couple of different ways. In New Jersey, New Jersey school jobs is a site, which is probably was a popular site, where we let go of our jobs, but it's all over the state. But then really trying to recruit, uh, we have a big job fair coming up, we certainly talk about C K pride, technical driven program, include diverse educators. We have our annual job fair on Thursday this week, four to six. So our admin team is working hard, reviewing resumes, sending out invitations to meet with folks. It is virtual job fair and then any candidate that can find, uh, that would meet our needs, we have them coming pretty quickly, the first right after that. Last Friday, we had a job fair, TCNJ, and we have another one with TCNJ on April 24th. So a lot of moving parts, you'll be seeing probably as soon as the budget struck, um, in April, then we will be starting the big candidate, forward recruitment for appointments for 2024. So this is a big time, um, we have this bill and, uh, again, as you know, and I talked about this, uh, one of our main priorities in our hiring process, one defines that that they obviously, and two, we're always looking to be diverse. So we're excited to be proud of the day, if you want to break down it.
Yeah.
Frank Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Curriculum and technology, Ms. Petru?
Yes, so we did meet, um, we actually met before the, uh, before the staff entered the set, so just to give a little bit of an update on, on what happened there. We had discussion around the station rotations and some of the changes going on as we plan for the future. We did talk about on course, um, on course is the new tool, we're like past bins, I'll just flag it here so that people hear the name and start to become familiar with it. And there, the training is beginning there around May 15th for staff, coaches and what we call power resources, to try to help the adoption of that tools that will be, um, used throughout the district. Um, and then parents and students will be trained later this year, um, conducting learning walks and all, I will go through everything. We did talk about quite a few, quite a few things. And we also talked about a new student orientation being put into place later this summer, um, where people have the opportunity joining the district, kind of get familiar, um, and become familiar not only with each other, but with the district. Um, and this is using, um, Title IV grants. And then I talked about the on course. So for approval tonight, we have, uh, letters A and B. A is for the comprehensive equity plan, which we are actually extending, um, till next year. Um, and this is a requirement of state. And then the last one is around curriculum hours, one for supplemental curriculum, excuse me, curriculum, um, which is as we prepare for that special education report that, um, Mr. Sudo mentioned before, as well as chemical inventory, which I think I had no idea even happened, but now it explains a little bit about the, um, analysis of chemicals that we have on site for chemistry class, as well as custodial chemicals and the, and the disposal of those. So with that, I'm going to move letters A and B.
So moved, may I have a second? Second by Miss Todd Marino, thank you very much. Any discussion on the curriculum? Uh, in that case, let's vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, and we'll stay with you, Ms. Petru, we'll talk about the second readings of the policies.
Yeah, so we, we did not meet policy this evening. All we had was the second reading, um, which is included here, policy 55, 5514 for the student use of vehicles, as well as policy 2430, which is the co curricular activities and that's the updates, um, based on some of the recent changes from other policies. So with that, I will move for letter A.
So moved, and a second, please?
Second.
Uh, second, Mr. Kobolewski. Oh, was it between you two? Oh, I was splitting the difference.
Speaking in stereo.
All right.
Brian wins.
Any discussion, any discussion on the policies, which will come into, will be in effect once we approve them this evening?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we did meet. First topic that we, that we discussed was the school climate survey. Um, and it's important to note that at one point we were, um, considering combining the professional development plan survey, which jumped them out past, you know, a lot of parents and teachers and teachers. We're talking about combining that with the climate survey, but then we had concerns about the link. And so the climate survey, professional development plan survey already went out and the climate survey blew out. Construction updates, we discussed, of course, and we talked about that, I think some of the highlights, you know, as, as we're communicating with the, maybe about, um, next step, there's going to be a lot of information about the pre construction work and safety work and the facility highlighted where the fences will be. I think that that's really important information that we will want, we want. The strategic planning, we reviewed the participants' responses. Tony noted that the stock bid numbers were low, but he sent out an additional mutation in half marks, participants from Stockton. He also looked at that there was pretty much even representation of West Hamwell and Lambertville. However, there was no representation from the West Hamwell championship committee, so Tony reset those. And I also want to note that we added an additional planning session that was adopted in, in Spanish, and we'll have help coordinating that with, which was Mark's side. And that's April 28th.
Yes.
And then lastly, we talked about potential grants and resources. Now we've contracted with Doris Grant Writing and Evaluation Services, and they're doing, exploring different options. And one of the things I wanted to note for everyone, the chef, is how our community, basically this region has, um, challenges. We find some of the, some of the larger brands in touch, different areas of our state, but not necessarily the county and Zappa. So when the granters are, it's really important that the grant writers are finding this funding so that we can do things like our budget, um, access any additional funds. Anytime or member, members of the public, families have any kind of connections with foundations or with companies that have, they have funds, they have a discretionary fund, all of that, all of those relationships are not actually the first for, for successfully acquiring grants. So if people have those types of relationships, it'd be great to bring that to Tony and, and like, you know, take those connections for us.
So with that, could I move into executive session?
So moved.
Tracy, thank you.
Second, please.
Lonnie, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And propose, all those in favor?
Aye.
We already did that.
Sorry, Tony was talking at the same time, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So.
We're going to take that before.
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 So.
But, so I will close the period of public comments. We do have a need to enter into an executive session this evening. It will be brief. We will probably be out for 10 or 15 minutes. We will be back. No action will be taken after the executive session. So with that, could I move into executive session?
So moved.
Tracy, thank you.
Second, please.
Lonnie, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And propose, all those in favor?
Aye.
We already did that.
Sorry, Tony was talking at the same time, I'm sorry.
We got it.
So.
We're going to take that before we, before, see in five.
It was going to get long.
Yeah.
My brain went down to two voices.
So.
Just ask each other.
Yeah.
Look at me and you guys on this.